Number thirty-one. So, Councilman Priest, do you pay for your business?
Yeah, I think IMS is here. Um, or there's some public boards that is available to talk. I asked if we have this discussion, because I want to get an update on we've got a number of drainage projects that are very pressing and flooding projects that are very pressing. Um, the Central Hills neighborhood in Woodhaven, uh, other places in the city. And I just like to know where we stand in terms of getting flooding and drainage projects addressed, uh, under the one percent program. And generally.
My name is Tom and I am Mr. Hughes. Uh, wanted to give you an update on the one percent. I didn't know exactly what you wanted. So, we're prepared a presentation that won't take long. But we're going to give you pretty much an update on what we're, what we're, what we need to do for the one percent program. So hopefully we'll cover your item pretty much. Uh, you can go to the next one. So, the thing that we're going to talk about is that, of course, you know, this program's been going on ever since, uh, uh, two thousand fourteen. Uh, IMS, we've been a part of, uh, program management team ever since February of last year. We started working with the city. But, uh, we wanted to kind of like give you a insight on a different thing. The first thing that we're going to talk about is towards the funds and the financing that you currently have. Uh, currently right now, uh, just, just to explain, of course, you know, that this is the total. Uh, based on the funds that are, uh, are, that are collected on a monthly basis, this is a, a total of the amount that you have received since the program has been in place, which is forty, forty-one point one million dollars. Uh, there's a, a amount of, uh, thirty-one point one million dollars that's been obligated. And that's basically based on the commissioning and also to the project that, that's been activated, uh, by the city council. You have, uh, thirty-one point one million dollars obligated. And this is in the package that we gave you as well. From what I was talking about, the different funds that we're using.
Can we, can we chime in on a little, I mean, that presentation, I would like to see.
I, I just like to hear about flooding and drainage, because that was the real thrust following up on what happened. Was it a few weeks ago? Uh, but.
Your meeting.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you. Um, and I'm asking, because we've been on, yes, all, all the time, have, uh, do you have an opportunity?
Yes, sir.
We're going to have, yeah, dates on the councils. So, just want me through the revenue, so can you go down one slide next to that? Alright, so we've collected forty, forty-one point one million. Yeah, we've collected forty-one point one million, including entries, obligated thirty-one point six. So, we essentially have, uh, we essentially have nine point nine, oh, I want ten million dollars to spend, that we can actually spend now, on new, on new projects.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. So, where are we, I guess you're just saying on your project and in your presentation. Um, but.
Come on, come on.
Hold on.
Come on, let's go out. Come here, I got you.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll, we'll give you a breakdown of what I'm doing with thirty-one point one million dollars obligated. Is it accurate that we have nine point one million dollars to spend when we, that we have, like, tens of millions of projects where we have gotten approved by the commission, but we are nowhere near that? It loads way past that forty-one point one million dollars?
Yes, sir. Well, well, the thing about it, uh, you gotta realize that, uh, every time the city comes here and requests approval to award a contract to a consultant or, uh, contractor, that mountain, this is just more hypothetically speaking, it could be a two million dollar contract. You, you're not going to spend that ten million dollars that same day. So, as, as every month, just like you just approved your claim docket and one of those contractors was suspended, uh, they were working on Main Street and that was an eight hundred thousand dollar, uh, invoice that they had for that period of time. So, as, as the, the contract or engineered, uh, performance services may, may present that to the city and the city present it to the council for approval. And so, that, that, the, the money that's obligated over the period of time, it will be spent once, once the services have, have been rendered.
Yeah, but we're just talking about, you know, I'm sorry, I just have something to add.
No, it's just, I, I think we do ourselves, it's important for us to be very precise about this language, because I think part of the problem right now is we're talking about, you know, borrowing this money and the money we're talking about, it, it doesn't make sense to borrow money if you say, oh, we've got nine million dollars just floating out there for free to use. I think we've got an issue of, we've, we've got needs that have already been approved by the commission that, out, as I understand it, far outstrip this forty-one point one million dollars. Am I wrong about that?
No, from what I understand, everything that's been obligated by the one percent sales tax commission is in that thirty-one point one million dollars.
That's correct.
Amount, so we don't have any, any further obligations. We have nine million dollars that, that's unobligated, that we currently have, that we can use freely at this particular time. Okay, sorry. Recession? Yep, two minutes recess. We're now, um, back, so, I mean, this is a term. Um, yes, sir. So, back to, um, my questions. Mr. Lewis ready? I'm sorry, okay. Um, so, we have thirty-one million dollars obligated. Yes, okay. So, we have nine point nine five six million dollars that is not obligated, which means we have that amount specifically to spend or that can be spent on other projects. Uh, that's correct. Unencumbered. Yes, yes, can be spent on other projects or keep in mind that thirty-one point one million dollars are, it's, it's also a cover's design cost. You know, so some of those projects, uh, there wasn't funds allocated for construction costs. So, that nine point nine, uh, million dollars will go toward those projects as well. Okay, so, okay. Councilman Priest, you seem to be held some consternation about, so.
I think it's important for us to point out, and I, I think what's left off this slide is that the commission has approved, was it thirty-eight projects? Now, while we've got this stuff obligated, there's still a huge amount of money where the commission has approved projects that are not touched at all here. That we've got, you know, the document I went to go grab for people, I think I, it was given out last week to people, um, was a list that Director Smash had generated that showed projects that had been approved that we have twenty-seven point four million dollars of need that's not addressed. And so, when we talk about this nine million unspent, it's not as though we don't have, I, I think it's very important for people to understand that we have identified a longer list of things that need to get done. The commission has approved and that it's not as though we have just nine million free and clear. And I think it's very important to, I, I think that slide and this talk about we collected this much, we've unleft, got this amount unobligated makes it seem as though we've got nine million dollars in the bank to deal with as we will.
So, so.
And I think we should, I think we should probably give some context to the scope of the need that needs to be addressed, because we've got a lot of stuff that isn't getting built. Spending money undesigned, stuff isn't getting built.
No, no question about it, but I, I think to your point, um, I don't believe that this, in my, from where I see it, I think I might, um, be more in weeds than, than, than normal. But, this slide doesn't say to me that we don't have need agreed in Jackson. What it says to me is that we have thirty-one million dollars worth of obligated projects that we haven't completed. And yes, we have nine million dollars in the bank, we probably have, you know, five hundred million dollars worth of infrastructure projects that we need to get done in C D Jackson. So, I, what you're saying, but I don't, I don't see the, I don't see the disconnect between all of this slide, so.
I just think for future financial findings, funding summary, the lines that need to be included on that slide are amount of projects approved by the commission so that people will get a feel for what's gotten through this process of being approved. So that we can understand that it's more like a hundred and nine million dollars and stuff that's been approved and this gap that we still have. So, I, I just, let's move on, but I just wanted to.
I, I think it's important for us to have, this is a conversation for us to have, so all of us on the same page about the one percent sales tax, uh, projects, the funds, and so we can, uh, as we talk about it, so.
It's, it's, it's also that we're in the process of trying to seek a very large loan. And people go, why are you trying to try and get this big loan if you've only spent thirty-one million, you've got nine million unobligated? So, I don't want us to lose focus on the broader financial picture.
There's another, uh, Councilman Priest.
My question is, um, can you kind of give us what's included in this category of obligated?
Uh, yes, sir. And that's, that's going to be on the next slide. As, as we mentioned earlier, uh, this thirty-one, thirty-one point one million dollars, uh, is not covering all of your construction costs. It might be just covering a portion of the design costs, but you know, you've got another face. So, every time the, the city come to the council and request for approval of, of a consultant or contractor or whatever the case might be, we consider that as a contract. Because, uh, just, so, so basically, this is a list of all the projects that you currently have that's, that's active. Uh, right now, we have six drainage project, six contracts, drainage contracts that are active. Uh, five of those, uh, uh, contracts are for design services. And you have one that, that is for, uh, uh, construction services, uh, which is the next street that is currently being constructed right now. Uh, but those other, uh, projects are in the design phase or, and some of them are moving to the construction phase like this, if you've got the whole circle. Alright, well, you, you do have a, a, an engineer consultant that did that project and it's a contract. Now, that project is currently being evaluated by the city, uh, and the program managers and, and, uh, at some point, they're, they're going to come to you requesting for the full approval, uh, to award that project to a contractor and we're going to execute that contract to a contractor. So, just wanted to give an example of how, what we have here. So, what we're telling you is that we currently have thirty-two contracts through this program that hasn't been executed. It might be design services or construction services, but you have thirty-two contracts. So, you got, and that's just pretty much a list of all of those that you have there and that's in your package for your review. So, this, this is where that thirty-one point one million dollars that you have, that's where it comes from.
What's the difference between the ones in blue and the ones in black?
The ones in blue are ones that, that was there, as, as I mentioned, we were here, we came aboard and, uh, last year around about February. So, those projects was, uh, pretty much ones that had been, uh, activated prior to us being here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, and I think this also brings us to the point of us needing, uh, understanding and being to a point of resolve on the role of the commission. Because I don't believe the commission should pick projects. I believe that they should oversee the execution of the funds and things like that. And as a group, we need to be on one accord on the role of everybody's position in this matter. Because we are the, we are the perstrating holders. The executive branch of their piece, the commission is to oversee these. Everyone's fine, but when you, you get the other folks flanging your rope. And I think that as a group, we need to be on one accord of understanding of the commission's role. Because right now, we're just going through a process of the commission approving projects. And I want to know, you know, my council colleagues comfortable with that process.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll say, Councilman Priest.
I, to me, it just comes down to what the legislation that's up, the commission says.
Oversight, conditions.
It says more than just oversight. What articulates that's the way it needs to be done.
No, the, the, the legislation does not say the commission takes projects. It says it proves a master plan and it's forward. So, I don't know, we need to get a copy of the legislation to all council folks to review. But as a group, we need to be on one accord on the roles of everybody's position in this matter. So, as we go through this conversation, colleagues, if there was ever a conversation that we need to be on one accord about, it's this conversation about what is the, I'm not saying keep your stance position, I'm saying tell your position. What is the council's position on the roles of this one percent? Because it's going to get, you know, even bigger as the years go on. And we're caught with misunderstanding and misinformation. At this point, we're starting to see the trajectory of this whole project on board right now. So, we need to get on one accord of what the council feels that the roles of this two hundred and forty million dollars is going to look like.
Right. So, I, I'll, I'll say this, Councilman Stamps. Um, because I do, I do believe it's important for us to all be on the same page, at least on the same page with the premise and will defer from there, of course. But I agree with Councilman Priest. I think we, the commission was created by the legislature, legislature. There was this piece of legislation that's there and more than anything else, what it says is the one percent sales tax commission is to approve, uh, one percent sales tax, master plan, infrastructure master plan for the one percent sales tax. And we go from there. Now, have they been done? I don't, I don't think so, not a master plan. And so, what is the, what's the interlude? I, I've got an attorney, um, and I think that's, that's probably the conversation that we should probably have with our, um, with our attorneys, but in the absence of, the question is, in the absence of an infrastructure master plan, what then? Because we don't have one.
They've been presented. And we need to get on one accord.
I, 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 let me ask you a question.
This might be getting outside the scope of the discussion. Um.
It's one percent sales tax.
One percent sales tax, trying about talking about drainage and flooding. We have gotten, we stand the risk of having a very long philosophical discussion here that I'm not sure if this is the, the right. I don't know. I appreciate you putting that there, but I think this might be, you know. I want, I put this aside on the agenda because I wanted to have an answer about flooding and drainage. And to what extent we have flooding and drainage dealt with. So, I'd like, I'd like to stick in the scope of, of that, okay?
Oh, of course, I got a question. I got a question. This is, this is. But, yeah, of course, I just want to say, the reason, I, I guess my mind went somewhere else because they came with a presentation, they didn't, and so you have one percent sales tax on this section. Um, Councilman Stamps.
Of the work department. Have we increased our capacity to handle spot flooding issues? For example, when you go down the street and you obviously see this, uh, a clogged storm drain. Have we invested in your resources to increase our capacity to fix that? You know, and I think let's go down that.
Okay, so, basically, when you ask that question, you're asking with respect to this one percent discussion or overall?
Because. I believe that a portion of these one percent funds should be used to build our internal capacity. I hear that there was a link discussion about that, so I appreciate that for the benefit of the public. Wasn't what it is, it's, it's, we're just going to talk about, because our internal capacity needs some help. You've expressed it over time, uh, and part of the master plan needs to be, to put, put public works back to work.
From the standpoint of the, of what we're doing with the, uh, one percent work that's been done, it has primarily been project work related to, uh, drainage, um, what you're, you're talking about. Because some of the issue that we had, it still goes back even to what we talked about with streets were paving. You know, there was a need to get equipment. So, we're in the, kind of in the same boat, but we are constantly in flux. And we're working with chicken on the egg because to build crews, as we've been trying to do for years, um, uh, because a good portion of my time, even through other administrations, I've seen the difficulties of trying to actually build up the crews, have the equipment, not have the equipment where I'm on you before you can actually replace it. So, all of that is actually being taken into consideration outside of this because it, it just has not been a part of the construct. I think there was, there were question marks about the equipment that was to be purchased originally as we went through this process. And so, as a result, we really didn't put, hang our hat on being able to do that, uh, and purchase additional equipment. Uh, at the same time, we do recognize that we have had, you know, active staff positions available that we budgeted to fund, but that just has not come to fruition.
The last question in that regard, Mr. Smash, is to talk about a proposal to raise, to change the pay structure for that department so that Atlas and everyone else can stop just recruiting on the job site. In a lot of these regards, so, you know, I would actually look at that structure. Because if there was ever a pay structure needs to be raised, it's that one. Because we're losing revenue, we're losing time, we're losing personnel, basically on the job sites and in public works. You know, guys say, hey, you're making nine dollars an hour, you're in Atlas, you know, put your shovel down, you're going to work tomorrow. And that's, that's what I see happening, you know, and that's a bad thing to see.
We've been discussing, discussing, making recommendations for a long time. Uh, we, we, we know work, work needs to be done. No doubt about that. And that's what one percent sales tax.
Fuck, fuck. All, 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 all the issues of projects and needs and taxes was identified. It all, it passed the one percent sales tax. Now, we got the money. People want to see work done. I want to see work done. Now. The question is, what's standing in the way? What's standing in the way? We've got the money. Somebody, somebody, please answer that question in, in the next couple of days.
Just leave it out. Maybe you'll answer tonight, because I mean, there is the, there is the question. That's the question. So, we, and thank you, thank you, Councilman Stamps. Um, so, yeah, you have a question. That's been obligated. What's the problem? Is there, what's the challenge, as you say, to be more positive, staying on it?
In my opinion, in your president's mind.
As fast as you can be.
Your problem is your commission, okay? That's your problem.
Okay, so, in that, in that one million dollars.
They're not, they're not in sync with this council and with this administration. And therefore, it creates barriers and challenges, just like Councilman Stamps said. You guys are not taking what interest was going on there. Because they're trying to establish policies, they are establishing policies that leaves you out of the decision process. This, last time I checked, and I've been living in this city for many years, this is the city of Jackson. We can't have a certain group of people that think a certain way, making decisions on behalf of this city. That's what you guys supposed to do.
So, let me ask you this, so I'm, 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 I'm going to put a, put a pause there. My question is, out of the thirty-one million dollars that have been obligated, I want to say, how much? Can, can we give a rest of that to the money slide? Do you think? Okay, so, what's my question? So, so we elected forty-one million. The commission has obligated thirty-one million worth of projects, right? We have spent nine million, correct?
That's what's been paid.
Paid, so I'm saying, we, how much paid? Okay, so how much have we spent out of thirty-one million?
You paid nine point one million.
That's what I'm asking.
You got another three plus million that's in the process to come for you for approval.
Okay, so my question is.
Twelve million, twelve that go through the process.
Perfect. So, my question is, we have thirty-one million dollars that are obligated. I think the question is, what stops us from using the thirty-one million dollars already obligated? Because it can't be the commission, because the commission already obligated the money. Yeah, go ahead.
Of that thirty-one million, you got over twenty million. Yeah, I think it was maybe a little off. You got two, you got two primary contracts. That, that is fifteen million dollars is wrapped up in two major contracts.
Okay, what are the pay contracts?
Superior and APEC.
Uh, yeah, I'm saying, what are the projects? Look at those, the neighborhood streets.
You got a hundred fifteen neighborhood streets that have been paid under the APEC contract, on the neighborhood streets.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and under the, under the, under the. Superior contract is roughly what, five major streets that's under that contract.
So, we have the nine million dollars for the neighborhood streets and the six million for, uh, the, right over the third half?
You got ten million for the APEC contract, five million for the, the Superior contract. That's, that's what's been approved as part of the commission's plan.
Okay.
Fifteen million dollars is tied up in those two major contracts.
Okay, perfect. And, but those contracts, are those those term year contracts that we, that was discussed for? Right, so those, those were actually supposed to be completed a long time ago, correct?
We had some delays, yes, major delays, yeah.
Alright, okay. Alright, so that's my question. So, what stops us from getting the work done? So, we send the commission, right? But that can't be the, because I'm looking at the money that's been obligated and, and given. And my question to the mission was, what projects have been given, have been requested of you all, that you all have not approved? And then I come and see the list of projects that have been approved, presented by the city and approved by the commission, and the two don't match. So, I'm asking, what stops us from getting the work done? Because the money and the projects have been approved by the commission. I watch the news, not go, so, I mean, what, what, what you're saying doesn't make sense. Come on, come on.
But keep in mind, let's go back to what we were saying at first. When you look at these projects, some of these projects are in the, the design phase. Alright, now, it goes back to what, uh, Councilman Priest was talking about. Now, so, say, say, since, let's just talk about the drainage. You got six drainage projects. Currently, you just got one that's, uh, under construction, which is Lynch Street. Okay, and you're ready to go with the Brooklyn also, but we got the Ubank's Creek, we got Ubank's Creek, Triptary. Uh, you got the, the Bell Haven Creek, you got two, uh, uh, two projects into one. And you got Town Creek, Triptary, so those projects are, are at spaces where they're going to get ready to go to construction. Thank you, now, that's my question. Okay, now, thank you.
So, are we outside the allowable time limits for the actual construction portions of projects that are on the table? Because I don't want to rush through stuff and then we end up with poor quality workers. So, are we outside the normal construction timeframe or constructing things? Because I know we don't pay money until, like Ray wrote, until all the, all the, all the shoulders have been cut and stuff has been striped. We don't pay those contracts out until everything's finished, you know, there's dirt everywhere. You know, so are we outside the allowable construction timeframe for our projects?
Well, the, the APEC contract, uh, didn't, didn't follow the, the contracted, the original contracted timeframe. So, we had to make, we had to extend that at some point, keep the work. Now, that was beyond the control of the city, of program managers, that was just a business decision the APEC made that they'd rather spend their time working on another project that they felt would be more profitable to them. So, all, all personally, put the city project on the back.
Who, 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 who prescribed that contract? Was it the city? No, but my question was, is it who's the city contract? I'm saying, what I'm saying is, who wrote the contract? Who wrote the contract and who, so, was it us, the city put it works, was it one percent sales tax? Um, um, uh, so, the city contract that was used.
Okay, that's what, I want to bring it in light. But, because sometimes the contract tools choose the projects that are going to move on and it's still within allowable limits, so to your order to push, push, push for months. I've tightened controls up within our contracting when we roll these things out that can make us a priority for everything. And we need to tighten that up.
No question about it, but I mean, I think also what we have seen in. Yeah, no question about it, but I mean, I think also, what we have seen in, in commerce, commerce and contracts, I think something we need to internalize. Is when you don't meet the deadline, then the, the meter starts running on how much you pay back to the city. Because of liquidated, you're definitely. Um, Jack?
So to answer your question, I think, um, uh, Ms. Reddick, who was on here, was tasked with putting the contract together. And she used five miles of, one of the surrounding figures, a couple of surrounding fifty together. And that's when she based the contract all up. Now that, I mean, we had some time now, this trial era, I don't think when she was putting the contract together, she expected them to leave the job and go somewhere and come back and finish to her credit. But, um, that's what they chose to do, so we gave them a hundred fifty-two hundred days, they took a hundred fifty-two hundred days to do it. And I don't think that was the expectation when she was putting the contract together.
Careful, please. Wait, who put the contract together? She's not on board. Alright, alright. Okay, so, this is, what's the total amount of money of the projects that have been approved by? How much money has the commission approved spending?
Based on what they recently approved?
The list that I, I reviewed? Thirty-seven million dollars.
Alright, that's what I'm asking. Okay, thirty-seven million, great, thank you, I really appreciate it. Councilor. Councilor.
What's, what's, what's the whole of this? Contracted getting it, being stopped to work. It will physically work on that. That's a new problem, that's a new business. Now, since we, you, 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 you learn. So.
A lot of contracts don't come up. A lot of parts come in for the, for the B.
How we gonna tighten it up? What, 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 what we gonna put in the contract to avoid this? We know what's happening. I, 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 I can, I can read the contract. And you have a project move. I just spoke to him.
So if I could, if I could speak to that question, uh, again, it's, it's gonna be better than tightening up the contract. And you got two options, you either incentivize them to finish sooner. And which is something that I prefer as opposed to trying to do something that's punitive. Um, it also cannot help the situation that the time that the contracts were let, even coming out of the head process, was in the height of construction season. You also have to look at your timing when you put the contracts out. That's something that I think initially, in any kind of, sort of speaking for, for a time that I was not here. Uh, the thought was again, always try to get the projects rolling as quickly as possible. And I think that there was a point where the team may have still been behind the eight ball and getting everything rolled out. When they did, you got major construction going on all across the metro, all across the state. And you're looking at contractors that don't just do work in this state. They do work, uh, you know, I know Superior does work in other places as well, and they have other locations to be able to mobilize staff. So those are also considerations that you're doing. Um, it goes back to this entire discussion, I mean, ultimately, you're competing for resources regardless. And even when you secure, uh, people contractually, and we learned some lessons, Dr. Williams and I have talked about this several times. You know, what can we do to make sure that in the future? Because what I see on the sheet that, um, that we, um, have kind of the team put together. But, uh, Mr. Priest, uh, has kind of passed around, you know, these are items that, you know, we should be able to address. Because they were part of either the year one projects that were put out there or the others. And it's gonna be critical for us to look at our resources and make sure that we, you know, Operation Orange Cone is included in here, uh, for twenty seventeen. Those, we have more projects that we would like to look at, because there continue to be street projects that we need to address. Just like Mr. Priest's point, there continue to be drainage projects that we have to take a look at as well. So those drainage projects were removed from consideration, even though they were in the year one list. Because there were not available funds in the collections at that time. And that's what I think the slide intends to show, is that, uh, the collections may be at a certain point. You still have projects that were basically approved, that used to go into design, that quite frankly, we ran out of money. Or because of timing, those funds had to be utilized elsewhere at the time to keep other projects rolling. And so now, uh, there are several projects that are available, and information has been presented. You know, IMS has presented it, Dr. Williams has presented it. And that is some of the basis along with, uh, the tiger funding, obviously, that we were looking for, uh, to get the leverage worked out. Um, because again, another point Dr. Williams has made over and over again, which I think is critical. If you wanna do capital projects, you have to have capital. And it doesn't pay for you to come in the way that this has worked. Because you had a year one collection of about thirteen point, I think, seven or nine million maybe. And I may be off, I think Michelle can probably help me out with that. But the point is, you had at least fifty million dollars worth of projects that we started off with. And you didn't have enough money to do all of those projects. So you know, you get that list approved, you're having to move through it slowly for sure. And I think the original intent was also still to go after leverage to be able to accomplish that. Because you would have to, otherwise you have to wait years before you would get there. And you would have to piecemeal projects that while they may have some meaning, they don't have significance because they don't have any lasting value to you. And you don't wanna get, that's something that we, you know, I think this whole program, the intent was to make sure that we didn't get caught up. To where we had those issues to kind of trip us up. We wanted to do at least the things that were significant. We obviously had urgent need during the way, uh, you know, Hanging Moss Bridge, Robinson Road Bridge, these are things that, um, I think there are points where we have seen some continuity between. You know, with the administration, the council, and the commission on those items when we brought them forward. I think there's an issue of how do we move forward, uh, with appropriate funding to get done, what we need to get done without the bottlenecks. And I think, you know, to your point and to your credit, you pointed out some of the issues that we've had, but these are just. Again, when you're in development and you're trying to really get the program going, this is some of what you come up against. And you know, there's been opposition, uh, again, to how some of the projects were picked and they were selected. There are still needed projects, I think we had a good selection process, I was here for, uh, part of that. And that's not why I think it's good, but I think going out into the areas that are affected and finding out the projects that are front and center was a good way for us to get it kickstarted. But now that it's, it's rolling, um, you know, there's some more fine tuning I think we need to do. Um, to Mr. Zilma's point, we do need to address how we're, and, and all your concerns about the contracts. I think we've learned those lessons, everybody has documented that, including legal. Um, I think the initial contract, there was a, it was a very good attempt. It is, again, it's using another municipality, uh, when we talked to them, I won't name them here, but when we talked to them, they seem to have similar issue. There is a similar, because they have work, they don't have as much work as we do. Uh, but it still kind of hit them because you basically only have the same crews doing the paving work. So there, that's competition. Just like for us, if we're gonna get employees in that are gonna be able to, first of all, that want to do the work that we have to do in all of our areas, um, we're competing. So we're gonna be, if we're not competing with the utility companies, we're gonna be continuing, uh, competing with these asphalt and paving companies. So all of that is critical for us to understand, you know, how we utilize the resources. And I think again, that comes, that brings us back to, uh, the critical issue here, and that is the leverage. And I just wanna kind of hammer that home, that we need to be able to utilize additional funds to make sure that we keep projects rolling. Because where those collections are, uh, there will come a point in time when, again, uh, administration, council, commission will probably be on the same page with projects. We will continue to, to work through projects. We just don't wanna get to this point again, where we have to figure out what do we do to go forward.
Uh, my question is, when was the next tranche of, uh, one cent sales tax money, um, deposited into the forty-one million dollar, you know, vessel?
It's, it's done monthly. So they're, they're dating monthly, yes, sir.
So we get, is it pretty much a million dollars a month?
Probably one, one point one million dollars, one, one area every month, okay, thanks. And, and, I'm sorry. I, I, I just wanted, you know, also to, you know, positive, you know, some of the things, you know, so what we wanted to do is also to, so, 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 just, just, whatever it is, I'm sorry.
One more piece of leverage. When, I know, we, like, we live in a vein of going with larger companies because they have more capacity. But there are several other companies, if the projects were crafted smaller. Keep it faster and move forward, so we can lower the bar, that would change the, the landscape of competition for everyone. Because I wouldn't just get the projects done. There are smaller companies that, that, that we could lower the bar some, could get it into this work and do some of this work. But when you, when you write these RFPs and these different things, you make it so big, knowing a few people qualify. Then that messes the pool of actual people talent, but if you lower the bar and break it down a little bit, you know, it's even more a project for, you can take a whole ward. And then you can break it down a little bit, so smaller companies can jump in, and then they could be able to execute this work.
Last, last statement, please.
That's my last one.
I'm talking about that. I, I know you don't know. At, at, at the beginning of this, of, of, of this conversation about. One percent sales tax and the projects. I can give Councilor Stamps credit. He said, he said building capacity with. Yeah. I know we got company machines, Apollo, how many paving machines do we, uh, to build capacity in-house? Then, how many, how many streets are, are we paving right now with our, uh, with our, our group, in-house?
So the answer to the first question would be zero. Uh, in terms of paving equipment that would be purchased out of one percent so far, so we haven't done any of that. In-house, we pay, we don't pay significant stretches often, but we have done it, we have definitely done it on, under my watch. The issue that you get into with our paving is that you have to make sure you can do, you know, curb and go to work as well. So you have to be very selective about the work that we do. But on a regular basis, uh, we really make sure that his staff has select locations on a daily basis that we go to. Whether it's potholes or if we are following up with utility cuts, so we are trying to do that. But we don't have a significant backlog of utility cuts. In terms of like entire streets, it's very rare that we will do that in-house. Because it goes back to, we can do maintenance, this becomes more of construction projects in some areas. Um, one of the key reasons why we don't do that is because we don't mill. We currently don't, don't have a milling machine and we don't have that capability. So what we have to do is make sure that from a construction standpoint, the road is stable enough for us to just go back and resurface.
It's twice.
Thank you. And I like this, I'm sorry. We can pave while we want to. Outside, come, but we still gotta maintain it. And we don't maintenance, thank, thank you.
No, I'm.
We're gonna be in the same shit, but we finish. We, 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 we don't come looking at that.
Forty-one million dollars, and I even bought a shovel in the house. And I think that's.
A pothole paving machine? Pothole paving machine? Um, I, I just. Councilor Priest. What's the total budget for road maintenance outside of one percent money? In terms of paving or just overall?
Just overall road maintenance? I would, I'd have to get that, I don't have it on top of my mind.
You just, you're talking about just asphalt?
For road maintenance, whatever you would term in your university's road maintenance, how much did that bear, non-one percent money?
About one point seven?
That's a ballpark.
Talking about the maintenance budget, because in the maintenance budget, it's eight streets.
The whole, the whole package, anything that you would think that goes into making sure a road is drivable, if it's put in. Because, because, look, one of the things that I think people ask is, in terms of do this project, do that project, they wanna know, how much are we spending? If this project didn't, one percent didn't exist, how much would the city of Jackson be spending on road maintenance?
You know, this, the council awards, uh, typically in the past is providing one mill to go into resurfacing. And I don't think that it's.
I thought we did this year. There we go. I only went into, okay, I only went into two thirteen, but. But typically that has been used for resurfacing. Okay, and the maintenance budget, that would be somewhere around four hundred to five hundred thousand, that would include salaries, equipment, uh, and just routine maintenance charge. Pothole and, um, utility cuts.
About one point five million dollars, uh, to put a hole in it, and then that's a hopefully triple our budget, raising our aim right now. You know, with some of these funds.
Alright, let me, let me, let me, other. I just want to make sure I note it's clear. How much do we have lined up for Operation Orange Cone for neighborhood streets? Sounds very, in the harbor.
Uh, the current amount, uh, is fifteen million dollars that we have, that, uh, that was obligated. And that's with, that's with major streets and also to, uh, neighborhood streets. So, so as for neighborhood streets, you, you currently have a contract of nine point seven million dollars right here, uh, that we, we're using. Uh, and that's a total of rough, roughly about thirty-six miles of road improvements. Um, and, uh, let me see, as far as, and those are some pictures that I want to show you guys and everything, be on a positive note. Uh, for, for the major streets, uh, you have, uh, four point five million dollars, uh, and it's a total of ten point, uh, three eight miles.
Alright, so. So you're, so that's how you get to the fifteen million give or take?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Alright, because I'm trying to, you had the slider, and that's why I was confused about that. Because I, I added up the, A, I don't understand why war two is at the bottom of the totem pole. Well, you're not doing the tigre anymore apparently, so that should be dying on the vine, um, and. The, what I get is ten point five million, I add up what the neighborhood streets and major streets are. On that charging.
Yeah, someone's spinning, so, so someone's spinning.
Includes, includes planned under contract, I just wanna understand, you're trying, you're trying to track, what's budgeted for neighborhood streets? I'm trying to figure out the, the math on neighborhood streets and major streets of Operation Orange Cone. What's budgeted by contract is nine point six million, but what's in the commission? Approval list is ten million. Say it one more time, I'm sorry. The approval list from the commission, that's the latest list they put out, because that's ten million dollars for neighborhood streets. But what was contracted with, with APEC was nine point six million, nine point seven million, nine seven.
So still roughly ten million, roughly, okay, okay.
So, still roughly, okay, okay. Okay. Uh-huh.
It's good, let's move on. Okay, I, I just have this, I, I, yeah, I just have one question. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's important, and thank y'all so much for your patience, we really appreciate it. I mean, it's, it's a very touchy issue with, with us on the council because, um, by no fault of your own, as we see, and not sure I was part of it. Um, but, you know, we, I had a war six town hall meeting about a year and a half ago. These streets were laid out on a, on a postcard, these streets about to be done, these are gonna be paved. And a year and a half later, we were still in the same position of waiting on streets to be paved. Right, so this is a touchy issue with us, because the timetable, timeframe didn't match what we, what made them match our expectations. So, not as if what anybody told us, nor did it make them match you off, because, you know, y'all wanted, everybody wanted, no one wanted you to do the same thing. Exactly, no one wanted to take long, because it just didn't. But I do have a question, so go to the tiger grant slide for me, you mind? Tiger grant? Tiger grant slide? Um, so on here, it says, uh, we got an addition for a meeting in front, we say it's not required to have all funds for the total construction costs. And we begin, explain that, explain point number two for me.
Well, uh, uh, FHWA, Federal Highway Administration, they give you options as far as, 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 uh, making sure that you have your monies, uh, your match. Okay, uh, so basically, what, this is gonna be a LPA project, a local public agency project. And based on that, uh, uh, you're gonna be invoicing on a, uh, monthly basis, or the contract is gonna be invoiced on a monthly basis. And when you submit that invoice to, uh, uh, M dot, uh, uh, FHWA for payment, uh, they're gonna reimburse you back your twenty percent based on that invoice that's being invoiced. So, uh, so what there is, you have to make sure that you have the money to pay the contract during that time. And when they reimburse you, they reimburse you back your, your match.
Okay, so. Someone like, hey, I'm, I'm not answering this, someone like, hey, hey, you go?
Pretty much, yes, but it's, it's, they, they look at it as reimbursing, reimbursing your, your money back.
Of course, I'm saying, but in terms of for us as a city, you guys something to say with that?
The city is required to have the matching funds in place prior to entering into a contract.
Okay, so cities require to have all matching funds.
The state has one set of requirements, the city has internal requirements, that we have to have the matching funds in place.
Okay, so, what does the state say? The state says that. But the city, uh, we say.
Before we can enter into a contract, we must have our funds in place.
And that's the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, can we pull the, can we pull the ordinance from Mr. Jackson? Uh, so we can have ready for tomorrow. Um, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Um, and for the purpose, tiger grants, I don't think one of those money, and I don't know where y'all was long, uh, that may be something we have to revisit as a council. Uh, thank you so much for bringing that to my attention. Okay, go ahead, me. Oh, Council priesters, go ahead.
You know, I, I'm a little frustrated right now, cause I sit in meetings where we explain over and over and over again why it makes no sense to try to do a project. If we don't have the funding lined up before we begin. And now the people that are telling me that over and over again meetings, except for this day, seem to be really quiet right now. That this is really frustrating to me because it makes no sense for us to start these projects. We don't have the funds that we know to get it done.
And so we need fourteen million dollars, correct, is that what the, is that what we need?
Yes.
And, okay, and the projected time, when's the projected time for these projects to be finished?
The deadline on finishing the projects is, uh, two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen, so it's the year and a half.
Yeah, but we have to, you know, we, we have to begin, I think we talked about, uh, the expectation is for, yeah. We have to, we have to meet the milestones, starting with June seventh.
No, agree, so the portion of the total fourteen million dollars, right now, we need it over two fifty years. That's one of the questions they had there, right?
Well, I think from, and to kinda talk to what Council priesters said, I think I've been consistently vocal in saying, we need to have money to begin with.
I think the whole must be there, right?
Because, right, but I, but I think the, just, just for clarity, just to say, and just to echo them as they said about initiating contracts. And that's really why we talked about being able to have the money upfront from, because from our vantage point with it being reimbursable. We're getting into the process of receiving invoices that have to come to us and then have to go to M dot and then federal highway, so that we can then get reimbursed.
It can take a little night and day. I, I get you completely, no, I'm looking at, my purpose of asking that, one is I wanna read the ordinance for myself. Uh, two, is I think we gotta explore all of our options, right? So, if it comes down to the, to the, um, to the point to where, look, we, we love, we love to have tiger grant, we couldn't have the money, we just need a lot of money. Right, and I think that's, that's a bitter pill for all of us to potentially swallow, but this is what we are right now.
But if I can, I just wanna throw this out here. Cause here's the, here's the ramifications of losing this, and I guess I hadn't said that on record, but maybe, and maybe I have. Yeah, because down the line, any federal funds that we go after, we will not be taken serious. And I just, I have to say that because why that's critical, uh, is because we had an instrument in place that we felt like would provide the resources for us to be able to complete these projects, otherwise we never would have submitted for them. Um, just like we did with the MPO funds. Recognize, we put out a lot of projects that affect several awards that get, did get awarded. So, there was never an expectation that we would not get them and we would not be able to proceed with them. So, I just wanna be clear on that. Our vantage point, you know, as a department, was to participate in this because quite honestly, what we could end up with with the amendment is just about twenty million dollars on top of money that we already have in federal funds, that we don't feel the city can afford to lose. I think that's been our urgency in talking about doing the leverage, because this needs to happen. So, that's, that's our point, and I, and I do also know, and, and I will see what little time I may have on this, to just say that, you know, I recognize that there is, uh, this perception about the awards that are impacted. But, but I wanna be clear that as we look at this, as we do, and we're tasked with all the time to specifically look and make sure that we are as balanced as possible with the projects going forward. So, I think we can show in every case that we have made a commitment to awards and we can go down and get in these streets. Cause I've seen this, I've seen areas, I've driven some of those roads as well, to make sure that, uh, we're balancing that. So, whereas I know that, that there might be an issue with the location, I think for us, it's like everything else. We don't just look at this in terms of projects, this is about implementation. I don't look at ideas, this is our ability to actually get stuff done and will be measured by the, as a city, the city will be measured by that for years to come, so.
Uh, this is my last few comments on this, and Council priesters, you can close it out. Look, my, I agree with a hundred percent. We do not move forward with tiger grant opportunity, it'd be devastating for the city, not just without have long lasting ramifications for the city of Jackson. Which is why I think it's important for us to explore all of our options in securing funds or moving forward with these projects. Um, so all options have to be on the table, in my opinion. Um, in terms of, to make, ensuring that we secure the funds, to have the funds available before we, before we apply for the grant. We obviously didn't do it because we didn't even have the money right now. But there was no, nowhere in the foreseeable past, is what I, what I looked at, did we, um, and we've been talking about for a long time, we have to go to the bond market, go to the bond market, go to the bond market. But we didn't, and we waited late, and now we have one bank out of the living that we went to for, for this, what, eighty, sixty, eighty million dollar, uh, loan that was in my bank, right? And now we, uh, once again, have a backs against the wall, hoping in the last thirty seconds of the fourth quarter to score baskets, score three quarters, and put us in overtime, right? And, I'm, I'm, no, no, that's the truth, I mean, we're, we're, anyway it is. If so, we would have thirty more million dollars on a forty. All right, I'm done, thank you, Council priesters, you can finish. Um.
We allowed ourselves to lose this tiger grant funding years ago for the same area, um, West Carolina Road. That was a project on Harvey Johnson's first time. It wasn't tiger grants, it was, but the funding for that. But, but now, it would be devastating for us to lose this one, which is why we just stopped with one of DC once a year, asking for things, and we don't execute the things now. Um, that's why I, we need, I said in the beginning, we need to get an understanding of the roles that everybody plays in this thing, and get it turned out. Cause it's affecting operations and it's affecting execution of government, and that's beyond the public works director and program manager. It's between legislative branch, executive branch, and commission. Need to sit down and, and define the roles, because, you know, that's why I'm firmly looking at taking the politics out of government. Cause we gotta get the work done, and it's too, too much politics in the mix of this thing. And we just call it is, it's too much politics in the mix of the money. And we gotta move beyond this, and move beyond this with understanding. Uh, let's go, turn out, A, oversight is oversight, fiduciary is fiduciary, and execution is execution. To me, my, my rudimentary thinking, that's basic, oversight's one side, and then they issue a report based on their findings, and it's legislation, it's the governor or somebody of their findings, of their oversight. But fiduciary is fiduciary, and execution is execution. So, I believe that we should do fiduciary, y'all should do execution, and they do oversight. And I think that's a basic balance of understanding for me, in this matter. And I believe that we as a council need to voice our opinions, because we're the ones that charge the money, not the commission, not the mayor. We are, so, as a group, we need to step forward and say, this is, I don't know, be in a form of resolution, or whatever, but we need to decide what is our position on the roles as a body. So, we can move forward and run this thing.
I, I think people are willing to have some more discussions, and I think, I think we can work this out. Um, you know, I think with regards to this loan, there are certain things that, you know, the due diligence process in ways of. Some things were outside the scope of our response, our ability to prevent, that there were certain documents in the due diligence process that the state of Mississippi doesn't keep, and that made things take longer. Um, so, I, it's late retired, I think we're sort of going through this.
I agree, thank you.
Uh, Council priesters, can I get something to say?
I, I, I'm, 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 I'm saying all the needs and the conversations I've had with people, that's the question. About the tiger grant. I'm not any. Thought process always been, if we get enough to the city to do that grant. Uh, you know, we, we, we seek funds, right, uh, right grants, and then I'm approved. And then, they die. As, 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 as money's spread, as we are now. But if you're concerned about the city of Jackson. It also be concerned, and we won't let this money go back. Looking at the possible means of getting matching money, it's a question. And I think, if, 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 identify these are the possibilities and let it be known strongly to this community. And never, ever, ever, whoever, whatever situation is blocking the process of getting this funding, hopefully not. If y'all, if, if the money is not you, who can, who, who, who's the community gonna blame? Y'all, y'all. Uh, y'all, is pushing to get this funding for the tiger grant, period. I don't know, I, I mean, I hold, I have to dig, I, I mean, I told, I have to step on. How many minds has it changed? We're getting. The time running out. And we have a ball, we're, we're, we're gonna throw him in, and, and hope. And then we, and, and, and we do, we all know, that I, that I, that I, that I, that I, that I.
Let's go to work, thank you. So, thank you, Council priesters, um, last question, um, how much did the, out of fourteen million that the city is, is from before? Did that take into account the money that's been set aside by the commission for the tiger grant? Uh, yes, sir, it does, so, it would have been eighteen million, or is it? No, the, the, part of that fourteen million, I think that, unfortunately, that is, 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 uh, obligated by the commission. Okay, so then we need, it would reduce that down to ten? Okay, that's all I'm, okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, appreciate it, thank you. Those, uh, touchy meeting at times, but thank you for bearing with us, thank you, thank you all. Yes, sir, thank you for your time. Great, now we are, um, um, we're going back to, yes, sir. So, yes, sir, exact session, okay. Um, so going back to, um, third, at this point in time, um, I'd like to make a motion that we consider.
Exact session? For purposes of litigation. Moving on to proper second, in course of time limits, all in favor? It's been, uh, firm, now, in motion to go into exact session? Second, moving on to proper second, in course of time limits? Not in session, not in exact session. We're now back in exact session, no action was taken, um, any further course of time limits closed, anyone? None? Yes, sir, announcements, yes, sir, announcements for you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh.